Okay, we'll call our meeting to order and good evening, everyone. Rob, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Leest.
Here.
Mrs. Sweet.
Here.
Mr. Bear.
Mr. Whitaker.
Here.
Mr. Avery.
Here.
Mr. Hannah.
Here.
And we do have a quorum of council. Please join me in pledging allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this is Tuesday, March 26, 2024. This is the regular session of Enen Village Council. Again, welcome, everyone. Additions to our agenda from council.
I'll move that we excuse Mr. Bear from tonight's meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Call the roll.
Yes.
Mrs. Sweet.
Yes.
Mr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Avery.
Yes.
Mr. Hannah.
Yes.
Okay, and let's see, approval of our meeting minutes. We have a little change, and it's a numerical issue with the minutes from February 27, 2024. We had a numbering issue on resolutions. So the resolution that we passed on that night, which was the 27th of February, the resolution adopting a statement of services for the proposed annexation should have been Resolution 2024-03. So we were off by one. We had it listed in the minutes as two, and that was a numbering issue that we had somewhere in the book or whatever, but I would need a motion and a second to make that correction to the minutes.
So moved. Second.
And call the roll, please.
Ms. Leest.
Yes.
Mrs. Sweet.
Yes.
Mr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Avery.
Yes.
Mr. Hannah.
Yes.
Thank you very much, and let's go to the public hearing that was held Tuesday, March 12, 2024. If you are satisfied with the minutes of that public hearing, then I would entertain a motion and a second to approve.
So moved. Second.
And call the roll, please.
Sweet.
Yes.
Mr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Avery.
Abstain.
Mr. Hannah.
Yes.
Ms. Leest.
Yes.
Mrs. Sweet.
Okay, those minutes are approved as presented, and let's go to the regular session of the council on Tuesday, March 12, 2024. And again, I'd entertain a motion and a second to approve those as presented.
So moved.
Second.
And call the roll, please.
Mr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Avery.
This is from March 12.
Yes.
Yeah, you're right.
The regular meeting. Okay, abstain.
Mr. Hannah.
Yes.
Ms. Leest.
Yes.
Mrs. Sweet.
Yes.
Okay, those are approved as presented, and Rob, welcome. We're glad you made it tonight. Do you have anything to present to council this evening? I know you've been at training all day. I hope that's going well.
It is going well. So second meeting, so I don't have the, we don't have financial reports this meeting, but we did receive our first half real estate tax settlement.
Oh, great news.
Three days ago, and I got an email today that our manufactured home settlement will be posted on Friday. So have the grand totals, but they did not send the breakdown or the expense sheet yet, so I haven't been able to post those. But they have made our bank account look much more healthy than it had been, not that it was bad, but.
That's good news.
So for the, for the March reconciliation that you'll get at the next meeting, those will be reflected.
Okay. Any questions for Rob this evening?
Thank you.
All right. So let's go into presentations, and we have a familiar face back with us. Ms. Olivia Young from Boy Scout Troop 17. Olivia, welcome again, and I'm going to turn everything over to you.
Hello again, everybody. My name's Olivia, and I'm here to finalize my project. My project is the three flags at the Enen Government Center. And basically, I wanted to finalize about the fundraising and how much you'd be willing to donate with it. My estimated cost is $5,000, $5,140. I was going to leave it up to you how much you'd be willing to donate or help.
Just a little bit of background, we have previously funded or helped fund different Eagle Scout projects over the years. So your request is, of course, nothing new to the council. The amount of that we'll leave for discussion.
Well, three, three complete flagpole replacements is not cheap, so I guess I'd be in favor of if the 5100 is going to cover the equipment and the supplies, and I see no reason why not to allocate that that full amount to her if she's willing to do that for the village.
And I don't disagree. Any other discussion or comments? Then I'd entertain a motion and a second to approve the $5,140 estimate.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
If I may, sir, before you.
Yes.
Where would you like that paid from?
So we will discuss that because I think we can use multiple funds for that. Is that a good enough answer? That'll work.
We may need to do a supplemental appropriation at the next meeting if it's.
Okay.
Depending on how it's divided.
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Avery.
Yes.
Mr. Hannah.
Yes.
Ms. Leest.
Yes.
Mrs. Sweet.
Yes.
Mr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Olivia, you do know you're doing the work, though, right?
You're not going to hire that out. Okay.
Be sure to take pictures of it.
Yes.
Let's go into communications. Real quick, we had a planning commission meeting that was last Tuesday, and that was for case 24-02. Mr. Walter Atkins requesting rezoning on Coronado Trail. The decision by the, the planning commission has been delayed until Tuesday, April 2. We will be having a follow-up meeting at 4 o'clock, and Kevin, has that been posted? Did we get that meeting posted on the Facebook? Okay, public notice and all that. Okay, I appreciate that.
You say 4 o'clock?
4 o'clock, Tuesday, April 2. And then that decision will be coming to the council, and then the council will have, I believe it's 30 days to take action. I'll have to double-check that, so. Let's go into staff reports. Kevin, I'll turn it over to you. Before you start talking about the resolutions, everything on the agenda, all the resolution numbers, just add one. And if you add one, that's all we have to do. We'll be right in sync with everything, okay?
Besides the order in my, in my presentation, so.
Well, okay.
Item number two should be number one, since anyhow. So let's just do that item, item number two. Resolution 2024-04, resolution for services. A resolution of repealing Resolution 2403 and adopting an amended statement for services for the proposed annexation of the plus or minus 60.386 acres from Mad River Township to the village of Enen and declaring an emergency.
I'll move that we waive the three reading rule.
I'll second.
And call the roll, please.
Mr. Hannah.
Yes.
Ms. Leest.
Yes.
Mrs. Sweet.
Yes.
Mr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Avery.
Yes.
And then we would need a motion and a second approving that Resolution 2024-04.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Leest.
Yes.
Mrs. Sweet.
Yes.
Mr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Avery.
Yes.
Mr. Hannah.
Yes.
Okay, and Resolution 2024-06, resolution consenting to the annexation of plus or minus 60.386 acres from Mad River Township to the village of Enen and declaring an emergency.
I'll move that we waive the three reading rule.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Leest.
Yes.
Mrs. Sweet.
Yes.
Mr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Avery.
Yes.
Mr. Hannah.
Yes.
And then I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number 2024-06.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sweet.
Yes.
Mr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Avery.
Yes.
Mr. Hannah.
Yes.
Ms. Leest.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Just so you know, this is the expedited method of annexing, so it seems like we've been talking about this for months, but that's just the process that the Higher Revised Code goes out. I'm not sure what the regular process is or how long that would take, but I think we've been working on this probably six months or longer, something like that, so.
Seems like that.
But we're getting there.
All right, thank you on that. Item number three now, the railroad crossing update on Enen Road. I had a gentleman from the railroad email me about that. As you know, if you've been out in that area, you can see all the railroad ties laying on both sides of the tracks, east and west. The, the gang crew is currently in Springfield. They're actually replacing all the railroad ties heading this way. And the email that I got from this gentleman from the railroad said that they're going to be replacing that railroad crossing, tearing it up, and actually putting new ties down, new asphalt, whatever, whatever they're going to do there. That is going to be taking place, weather permitting, and any unforeseen circumstances that they may run into between Springfield and here. That's going to be taking place on April the 3rd, Wednesday, April the 3rd. The crossing will be closed for one day. He said one day only. They'll open it up that night. They're going to detour traffic down, is it Snyder Road to Haddix to Lower Valley, you know, out that, out in that area. It's going to be kind of a mess because that's a lot of traffic they're going to have to detour. But he said they'll probably start early. Their crews start early, maybe 6, 6 o'clock in the morning. So, which is kind of good news that they're, that's going to be done because and then, then they're going to go on west and continue putting ties in. But it's kind of good news that that portion's going to be done because that, we were kind of wondering about how that's going to coincide with the wastewater line project that's going to be taking place too, so. So April the 3rd, Wednesday, that will be down for one day as of today, okay? It may change due to weather, due to trouble. I don't know, but so.
How are they notifying the public as far as people rerouting themselves?
We will put that on our Facebook and webpage. I will get some language from them, but I don't know how they notify them.
Do they tell you? Do they have some kind of a notification system?
I will ask. He did not say.
Maybe they put a sign up here, tracks will be closed?
Yeah.
Or something like that? Okay.
Yeah. Well, naturally, they'll have the detour signs and road closing. I think they were even going to possibly put up some sort of light down in that intersection or some, somehow.
But maybe something like a week ahead of time, these tracks will.
Let me reach out to him again.
Which we're there almost, yeah.
I would just probably make sure that it's not done around April 8. Let's avoid that timeframe.
Item number four, we had a reconstruction meeting for the wastewater line project. That project is going to start the first week of May. And he says 30 days he'll be done with it, so the actual completion date is July 1, but he said 30 days, you know, natural, naturally, you know, weather, weather holds out during that time. They're going to, the first bore from the water plant will be pretty much down to Superior Drive. They said they could bore probably 500 feet.
At one time?
Yeah.
So tell me that again. They're going to start the first week of May, and really, when do they think they're going to be done, Kevin?
30 days.
Wow. Wow.
But the completion date is.
The actual completion date is the July 1.
Per Ohio Public Works Commission funding?
Yes.
Okay.
So there'll be every, what is it, every 500 feet they're going to be putting in a, a.
Manhole.
Manhole with cleanouts in it and moving on, so. Let's see. Item number five, the mayor took care of that. Item number six, Safety Congress again this year in Columbus through the BWC. That starts tomorrow through Friday. I will be attending on Thursday, at least part of the day to get, get some credits for a meeting that we missed up here in Springfield, a safety meeting, so. But that is, I'll be gone Thursday, at least in the morning, maybe mid-afternoon I'll be back, so.
It's in the room next to where I was today.
Cool. Guys can have lunch together. Rob's buying.
Item number, I had an item number seven. Countryside paving project. I turned that project in again to the county as we do each year, you know, the paving projects with the county, road markings with the county, things like that. I turned that in. I did get a quote back from Bob McClure. It came in just a little over $70,000. I am waiting on another quote from Mead Paving that I got from last year. I told him to kind of look at it again and update it, so maybe his can come in a little bit cheaper. Not real sure, but he was going to get it to me by Thursday. I have to let Bob know on Friday if we are going to participate in that or not. The pavement marking, just to let you know, is just a hair over $5,000 to mark the pavement on East and West Main, corp to corp, and then down, from the intersection down to the corporation, past the water plant.
And I had hoped, Kevin and I talked last fall, I had hoped to get that done in conjunction with the South Senior Street, but it just didn't work out, so.
Yeah, that got too late in the, in the season, so, so that'll, that'll definitely happen. But I'm waiting on me to get back with me on a, on another quote, just so we have to compare. So I will let you know on that which way we are going to go on there. And we did, Rob and I and the mayor did look at the funds, and we do have the funds in the street, street funds to, to do that project, and it's long overdue. We keep putting it off, you know, and it just.
It roars in bad shape.
Bad shape, and, and it'll be basically grinding down. I'm going to see if we can't grind down like two inches and maybe put an inch and a quarter back in like they quoted. But they're, they quoted grind down an inch and a quarter, put an inch and a quarter back in, but it's just so high.
1989 or 90, the last time that road was overlaid. So it's been a while.
See what that, see what that comes back in, and we'll, I'll keep you up to date on that one.
Kevin, the bid from McClure, did that come from A and B or who did that come from? Do you know?
I'm not sure. I'd have to look.
That's just the county's estimate.
That's the county.
Yeah, that's just them giving an estimate.
Yeah, right, right. Yeah. Did I say bid? I'm sorry if I did, so. I think that's all I have for now.
Questions for our administrator? Thanks, Kevin. Chief, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council and residents. First item I have is the annual report for '23. I noticed I forgot my table of contents. I'll apologize in advance. But to give you a summary, we have a police chief, three full-time officers, and one part-time. We did lose a full-time officer in 2023, who's Officer McHenry, who went to the sheriff's office. We brought on two full-time officers, Officer Thomas Schaefer and Mike Statesman. The cruiser-wise, we do have the oldest car, it's 2015. That's the black one with the white vinyl that I need to still take off the top. Looked to propose to get rid of that later on this year, get past the Eclipse time. It's getting up there in miles, but short of that, we have three other, well, four other vehicles that are running very good. Three of them that are at a patrol status level. That's the ones you see driving around each day. And in 2023, we had the installation of our Axon Fleet cameras. Those are the cameras that are interior and exterior of the patrol car. That's a snapshot from their website. We are very satisfied with those. Stats for the year, there's just the total additions, the one I submit monthly, some highlights. Traffic stops from 2023, which is on the last page, it discusses doubled from 2022, and our citations were up by 34. The list of each one of the officers' training that they attended each year, or in the calendar year '23. That includes this mandatory CPT. On page 10, you'll find some notable legal updates that we faced in 2023, one of which was the Ohio Issue 2, was the legalization of marijuana. Marcy's Law, which has been in effect for some time, however, there was two adjustments. One was in April, one's in June, and there's a lot of stuff on that, but essentially, it requires us to created some documents for law enforcement and some handouts to give to victims particularly of violent assaults and stuff like that, and then any other victim, whether or not charges would be issued, to give them information on how to get compensation or their rights as a victim. And the Attorney General's provided that, and again, you can find that on the Attorney General's website. I'd be more than happy to walk you through some of those down the end, but that took up a lot of time on my end and also the officers, because there was a lot of studying on that. And then, of course, Ohio brought the distracted driving in, where we were given warnings for the first half of the year, and now we currently can stop and cite, cite for that. And also, we are required to document that for the state monthly if we issue citations. Some other notable things in communications, we did apply for the retention bonus grant, through the Department of Public Safety, through, which we were approved and we issued, dispersed that to all officers eligible. We do have one remaining that was set aside for a potential full-time position, which after some studying of the books and stuff, we'll put that on hold, but that's setting there, and we may or may not have to give that back to the state, but I'm still reaching out to them, seeing how we can do that. Our village policy manual, we worked on that. We assisted with everybody working on that. We got that put out along with the compensation policy that was put. Total department use of sick times, all employees down there was 65 and a half hours, worse for the year. We had the South Enen Zini Road construction that did cause some traffic issues, especially in the residential areas, but thankfully for the communication of the residents, we were able to increase patrols, take some enforcement action, and then work alongside the administrative and street department, and we did add some additional stop signs down there by Twin Lakes and Sunny Brook Trail. Motor vehicle thefts increased dramatically, not just in our municipality, but across everywhere, including we had one armed robbery of a vehicle theft right around the time of Apple Butter. And then again, I talk about the stops and citations. We also discussed, we being Police Department Administration, about relocation of the flagpole. And thanks to the scouts for taking that project on. Also met with the Historical Society, and council approved that we, over a course of time, get that pole moved and then push that parking lot out, revamp, revamp it, and for one of the projects we had a few years ago, we're looking for some sort of covered parking for the patrol cars. We were looking at more of a canopy style, like you would see down at the Speedway corporate office or something like that, since we can't really house some sort of a garage. That will not be necessarily this year, but that is where we are headed. And we'd also be able to access that in the east side of the lot from Indian Drive and move the way the parking is, and it would create more space and also look quite nice and eliminate some of the mowing in the back.
Good report.
Thank you. My, I tried to summarize that the best I could. The next one, as on the air, is a resolution for a countywide 911 plan. We are, we do pay for 911, 911 services through the regional dispatch center for dispatching, but I did receive a communication where they had asked that we enter into some sort of, we sign a contract with them, so that's where this resolution is. I can read it in whole, or I can give you the highlights.
My recommendation would be title only.
Title.
Just my recommendation.
Title it is. A resolution pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 128.08 for village council to approve the final plan for Clark County 911 system. I can, currently, we're contracted. We pay $550 per call for service. That's what, that's what we pay. They are just required by the revised code to have municipal corporations have a resolution to approve or disapprove their plan, which is to charge us what we charge. There's no difference.
And what was the estimate, Mike? We had talked about this a while back. I can't remember what it was now.
Our last fee was a little over $7,000.
I thought it was around seven or eight.
Yeah, which is roughly. And we try to keep our calls through dispatch down as much as we can to alleviate that. For example, if we were to do a lockout at the gas station or something, we might not, we wouldn't necessarily go through dispatch to create a call for service on that to help save funds, so we're constant work in progress, but.
Is this a yearly thing they're going to review? Or this is a one-time thing? How are they going to look at the charges going forward? Are they always going to stay at $550?
As of the, as of the, as the agreement we're in, they go off of the previous year and bill us for the following calendar year. I have heard nothing of them increasing or decreasing. I know there are some municipalities that did sign. Look, I think South Charleston did a two or three-year contract where they paid a flat rate, a little higher fee. I, within a 10% higher low, but I would.
But ours is going to stay the same.
Yeah, our, our numbers are pretty consistent, so I, I would, I'm, I think it's in our best interest to stay where we're currently at, is my opinion.
I'll waive the three reading rule for 24, or 2024-05.
Oh, second.
Hannah is, dash, 05?
05. Everything went up one. And call the roll, please.
Was there a second?
I did, yes.
Mr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Avery.
Yes.
Mr. Hannah.
Yes.
Ms. Leest.
Yes.
Mrs. Sweet.
Yes.
Now we'll need a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2024-05.
So moved.
Second.
Just pick anyone.
Further discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Avery.
Yes.
Mr. Hannah.
Yes.
Ms. Leest.
Yes.
Mrs. Sweet.
Yes.
Mr. Whitaker.
Yes.
We thank you for that. I do, good. I would like to point out, when we sat, when I sat in on a lot of those meetings too, when they were building a regional dispatch center, at some point, once they get everything worked out, they will be able to provide leads access. Leads is the law enforcement database system. Currently, we contract with a company called CMI Authority Red Hawk, which we do pay an annual fee. It's a little over $2,000 annually. Once the sheriff's office is able to onboard the agency, so we can act, get it through that, that will relieve a financial cost of us. We will, we won't have to pay it, and then, so we'll save a few, few grand, but for now, until that, until that happens, we have to, to pay the double. Went to the emergency management agencies meeting today for the Eclipse, which is going to happen again on April 8 at approximately 3 something in the afternoon. We have a, that was our final meeting until the, until the Eclipse. Again, it was just making sure that everybody is on the same page, and if something would happen, that we're all able to communicate. We have a chiefs meeting on April 2, where we'll finalize and talk about some of the law enforcement. I know that State Patrol, Clark County Sheriff's Office, and of course, the Enen Police Department will be taking away any leave of absence. Nobody's allowed to take that off, and we'll be, we'll make sure that we're staffed. We're, we'll all be staffed. We're already, all of us will be here, and we will absolutely have 24 coverage during before and after as much as we can, because we are going to expect the worst and hope for the best. I, I don't think, the biggest concern is obviously, from a law enforcement standpoint, is any criminal aspect, and then, of course, some sort of major crisis incident, but for just the general public, the influx of visitors and the traffic.
Traffic.
Before and after.
Yeah, traffic.
We'll just all be patient. Hopefully, there's no traffic accidents, and everything flows good, and we'll see it in a lot of years after that. Well, some will.
Mike.
Yes.
Just wanted to mention that the school will be closed that day.
That is correct. All schools in Clark County are closed.
All schools in Clark County.
Yes, including Greenan, and I, and some have even canceled afternoon, after-school activities, so.
The village of Enen will be open.
Yes, so.
We will, and we also do have the Eclipse glasses up the front office.
You do.
If they run out, which they should not, please reach out with me, to me or one of my officers, and we'll try to get you some of the overflow that we have. For miscellaneous communications, I have this. I noticed, I would like to compliment the administrator and his team for getting those lights out in the parking lot and on the building brighter. We really appreciate that. It's made a significant difference, and our officers pointed it out to me, so I'm going to pass that on. And also, I think the rocks out front and the flower beds look phenomenal, so kudos to that. And then today, we had, I had an applicant that I made a part-time condition, or part-time offer, offer of employment, and today, myself and the mayor. And today myself and the mayor swore him in and he will start first thing tomorrow. We'll get him reading the policy and all that and getting trained and get him out on the streets.
This is a part-time officer?
Yes, he'll be part-time. His name is Jacob Hupp and he's a good young man. Mayor got to meet him today. We'll do an official swearing-in with council, then the proceeding next, probably what, April? Either first one of April or the last one, whatever works out to get his family situated.
The day after the eclipse.
Yes, the day after the eclipse. I, I will, I want, I want, personally, I want to thank council for, you know, approving the full-time and stuff. And I absolutely want to thank Mr. Storm. He has helped me with the budget and fiscal stuff more. And I know we should have met earlier in the year, but really that meeting we had a couple of weeks ago really was really helpful. Broke it down for me in terms I could understand and we're on a, we're on a positive move forward. But unfortunately, we did not have in our budget to bring on a full-time officer that would last long enough for me to be comfortable with employing one of those because I don't want to see anybody be laid off and I don't want to look forward to one of my full-time officers leaving, creating a monetary cushion. But that being said, we are able to bring on a part-time officer, work him as maximum amount of hours that we can and that's what we'll do and we will move forward until we can continue the professional growth of our agency. And all the officers and I spoke about it and everybody is, we're all on the same page, so.
And just for council's information, since it's been a while, the final appointment is by the approval of the council and that would be at the end of the six-month probationary period and that would be from the recommendation of the chief to the mayor to the council.
Yes, sir.
So it's kind of the procedure on that.
And that would conclude my report.
Questions for our chief?
What was the name again?
Hupp, H-U-P-P. First name's Jacob, yes.
Do we want to insert a little business, Mr. Hackett here last week?
Why don't you go ahead?
Time comes.
You go ahead now, if there's no questions for Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Rick.
Last Friday, we had Senator Hackett come in to discuss the, the village request for state budget funding for the park. We supplied him with a presentation of our goals and our, our, our long-range plans as well as the budgetary aspect that we received off of that, which now is roughly about ten million dollars. There are some monies that are available coming from the state. But it did seem that right now the, the Champion Center in downtown Springfield seems to be getting the, the lion's share of the monies, it appears. And we're, we're still going to try to proceed with a sizable budget request from the state senate for, for our plans and for our park. But the, I, I think it maybe will not be the extent of what we hoped for. So we'll keep our fingers crossed, hoping for the best and, and we'll continue moving forward with that. Mr. Hackett left with copies of our park plan and, and we answered all the questions for him. We appreciate him coming down. Mayor, he was otherwise with the school, I think, that day, but Kevin and myself and Mr. Bear as well as trustee Paddock met with him here in the government center. So we're going to keep trying to move forward on it, still looking for fundings and still not giving up any, any opportunities we can for, for future funding with wherever that may lead. So, thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Any, just checking, any committee reports? All right, let's go into citizen of the year. Kevin, I'll turn it over to you for just the candidates and this brief description.
I forgot to run my, I included in my packet there just an informational handout about beekeepers. Email says attached is a 2024 call list for swarms. Green County Beekeepers Association has a website there. Wanted your off, wanted our office to have a list before you receive calls from frantic homeowners or park visitors during the bee swarm season, which is April, May and June. Terry Lieberman-Smith from the Green County Bee Association. And at the second page, it has phone numbers, availability and what area they covered, covered. If anybody encounters bees that they want to get rid of, so I might keep that handy. I might put that on the website to just.
That's going to be my second question.
Yep. And Facebook, maybe?
Yep. All right, citizen of the year. We had two citizen of the year and one young citizen of the year. I'm just going to kind of read some highlights here. The first is Mr. David Babcock. He was nominated by John Young. Outstanding past and current achievements in such nonprofit organizations as the Air Force Association, Fisher Nightingale Houses, American Society of Military Comptrollers, Program Management Institute Technology and VFW are singly greater than five to six great professionals combined. He's a council member for six years. If I read that right, I should know that, shouldn't I? Serving as on council for six years. Currently serving on the board of trustees as president and former vice president of the Wright Memorial Chapter number 212 located in Dayton, Ohio. He did some website restoration for the AFA Chapter 212. It was, it was not up to date over a couple of years, using his IT skills and completely revamped the website. Community support and leadership from his contributions to the Dayton Air Show, Air Force Ball, to an unwavering supportive habitat for humanity and veterans at the Dayton VA Medical Center. Youth leader at his church, has served as youth leader for third through sixth grade for over eight years. I never knew this, but using both his magic and science to teach a kids. Dave also serves as a chief percussionist in the praise band at the church. Those are some highlights. If anybody wants to read everything else, I mean, that was a good write-up there. The next one is Lynn Tranter. She's been a resident of Enen over forty-five years, has been serving in various ways since moving to Enen. She has dedicated her skills and heart efforts for others in the Enen Emergency Relief pantry, food pantry. She's served as secretary for over five years and has many responsibilities at Enen Relief. Manages the distribution and inventory of the food items, various few food items. She also picks up weekly donations from the IGA, which saves for, from buying cereal, snacks, chips for the clients. She helps multiple food drives held at the Enen Relief as well as keeping the building clean. Lynn is an active member of the church, Enen United Methodist Church. She volunteers in their growing night program, which provides food packs for the weekend for children who otherwise may not have enough food. Lynn has demonstrated a leadership in other positions at the United Methodist Church, including president and secretary of United Methodist Women's Group. Very talented in knitting, crocheting and uses her skills to bless others with prayers, shawls, scarves, blankets and more. And once again, there's a little bit more on her if anybody wants to see that. And those are the two citizen of the years. And the young citizen of the year is Ashley Hunley.
Allison.
Allison, I'm sorry. Allison Hunley. I don't know where I got Ashley, but anyhow. Some high school activities. She's been a varsity soccer player, basketball, track, softball, class president, student council, National Honor Society, student ambassador. Some community activities. She's worked in the concession stand, volunteered at her church, soccer youth camp, basketball youth camp, worked at the bean booth at the Apple Butter Festival. Some FFA activities, farm day, she does the blood drive, help with the blood drive. She went to national and state convention for FFA. She's been the reporter in, for the FFA twenty-two and twenty-three season and president from twenty-three to twenty-four. Inside the classroom, Ally. Ally is listed here. Always strives to challenge herself. She has taken multiple college classes during her high school in order to prepare for her future. Ally plans to attend Wright State University and major in pre-medicine. Her career ambition is to become a pediatrician and help make a difference to the lives of children.
So it's time to vote. Kevin, if you would collect the votes from the council. Rob, if you would do the tally, it'd be much appreciated. Delegation of duties here.
That's, that's, yeah. That's trash. It's Rick's.
Yeah, I wonder who that is.
Every year.
Guaranteed, that's Rick's.
It's like that all the time.
Do you want to do that by on?
Well, he's doing that. I'll just mention that Allison was the FFA queen selected at the FFA banquet this last week, this last Wednesday.
Sounds like very talented young lady.
Five minutes later.
Paul said to do it.
All the guys over there.
Oh, that started well before Paul got here.
Nobody likes a snitch, Jerry.
That's why you were here four thirty.
And of course, the young citizen is Allison Hunley. The 2023 citizen of the year is Linda Tranter. And we will be giving a call to her. Dave, congratulations for being nominated. But I will give a call to both of these recipients after the meeting, as is tradition that we try to do on the night of the choosing. We've got an executive session this evening, so I would accept any comments from the public at this time. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion in a second to enter into executive session to discuss the employment and compensation of village employees.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Leest.
Yes.
Mrs. Sweet.
Yes.
Mr. Whittaker.
Yes.
Mr. Avery.
Yes.
Mr. Hannah.
Yes.
Six forty-four.
And this will be for elected officials only? And this will be for elected officials only?
Okay, we'll need a motion to return to regular session.
So moved.
Second.
All roll.
Mr. Avery.
Yes.
Mr. Hannah.
Yes.
Ms. Leece.
Yes.
Ms. Sweet.
Yes.
Yes.
With no further business.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.
One fifty-seven.
Have a good night.
Talking to nobody.
Thank you. Good night.